Good evening and welcome to our September 16, 2025, 6:00 PM council meeting. It's wonderful to see everyone here this evening with our invocation, our police chief, MP Jackson, and then Mr. Estrada. Councilman Estrada will lead us in our pledges.
Let us pray. Almighty God, whose great power and external wisdom embraces the universe, watch over all of our police officers and firefighters and protect them from harm in the performance of their duty. We commend them to your care because their duty is dangerous. Grant them strength and courage as they carry out your will. We pray that you watch over these brave men and women and grant them your almighty protection. Amen.
Please join us in our pledges to our flag.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas society, I pledge my allegiance to the Texas long state under God, one and
I would like to note that Councilman Styron is not present this evening. Councilman Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all, and I'd like to report on a few projects that have been underway in District E. We've been working on overlays in Golden Acres. We've probably about halfway done. We have about eight streets on the books, and so we've done Lily Violet Wichita. We're working on Panzi and Morning Glory, and DuPont Sinclair and Dedman are next, and half of these streets are also in District F, so that's, it's a positive thing for Golden Acres. We're also getting some infrastructure projects done on Freeza between Huckleberry and Peach, so I'm really pleased to see that. With that, I pass. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dow.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see a lot of familiar faces. Thank you, guys, again for supporting local government. Without a pass.
Councilman Fusler.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say congratulations to the Pasadena Rodeo for the wonderful cook-off this past weekend. I was out there, had a great time with my family. This coming weekend starts the Pasadena Livestock Show and Rodeo, so make sure, starting on Friday, September 19th, and it runs through Saturday, September 27th, please go out, support the rodeo, which ultimately supports our students. And thank you for being here tonight, and have a wonderful evening.
Councilman Horario.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out here. I wanted to give an update on our current work going on in District A. We have an update regarding Texas and Munger. We have continuously doing work on that. I'm very proud of that. Thank you, Director Green, for that. I also have to know that we're going from Texas and Munger, now we're actually stretching all the way to Jackson, so that whole street is getting done, which is sufficient, just do it once rather than come back and do it again. So I appreciate that as well. I also wanted to recognize Mr. Jesse Torres. Over the past few days, resident of District A, reached out to us, to Mayor Thomas and myself, regarding the concern that she had, and I was very proud that we were able to address that concern and make sure Mr. Jesse Torres was actually out there and took care of that concern immediately. So it was very gratifying to know that our citizens called with the concern, we were able to address that concern, and they actually called back and said, hey, this gentleman did great. We're very happy with his job. So I wanted to make sure that doesn't, that doesn't go unnoticed, and Mr. Jesse Torres, I would notice he's here, but we want to thank you for your service. That's amazing. With that being said, I'll pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Valerio. Councilman Guerrero.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. First and foremost, want to highlight the rodeo cook-off. It was a great time for family festivities. I taught the mayor some steps out there. Whoever missed it, missed it. We wanted to highlight all those people that participated and have continuously come back. Thank you all. You are part of why our city is so great. TECO, Councilman Fusler, this weekend will start, start the rodeo and livestock show, so excited about that. I grew up chasing chickens, so now it's fun seeing other people do it. Want to take time to highlight, October 7th is National Night Out for the Deepwater HOA, myself and Councilwoman Van Hout, although I'm pushing her to it. We've coordinated to hold our, our National Night Out at Deepwater Junior High. Thank you to the superintendent for Deer Park for allowing us an opportunity. That will be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Everyone is invited. Want to take a moment to recognize the Christ Church Apostolic Church. One of their members is Mary Davis. Want to take my time to send my condolences and blessings to you and your congregation as I'm aware that the church burned down, unfortunately. Please, should you need anything, reach out to us. We're here for you, and we will have many prayers for you and your congregation. With that, I pass. Thank you.
Councilwoman Van Hout.
There is a Coffee with a Cup on Wednesday, October 1st, from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning. This will be at Cosmic Bean, 5834 Spencer, so you can get caffeine, maybe get some answers to your questions, and maybe get to pet a canine cop. The city is accepting applications for the Housing Rehabilitation Services Program. They're accepting these through the end of September. This is for the larger home repair projects. There are too much for volunteers to do. It is for low-income families. There is an online application, or you can call the city, call your council member, and get a copy. If you're looking online, it's on the city page along the top where it has departments, community development, housing rehabilitation services program. It has a lot of things to read in the application. It has both Spanish and English. You can read the Spanish, if you read Spanish, but you have to fill in the application in English. So the Spanish will give you a guideline for what goes in what space. Today is National Voter Registration Day. Reminder that the deadline to register to vote in the November election is October 6th. If you're turning 18 by November 4th, register to vote now. You can register before your birthday. If you have moved, do an address correction. The November ballot will have 17 state propositions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be calling citizens up to speak. Over the course of our last several council meetings, I've made this statement that if you address council, you should be addressing council, not the audience. Also, too, you are not to address any citizens in the audience, and if you deviate from that, you will be escorted out. We have to have the focus to the council and to the citizen making comments to us. So with that being said, Ms. Janet Harris, if you'd please come forward.
I have two pictures I'd like for you to look at, if that's all right. Hello, everyone. I am very blessed to own a part of Pasadena's history. I have a 1936-built house, which was built by Mac McNeil. He was an oil roughneck. His wife was Miss San Antonio of 1932. When I bought the house, it was owned by the Harbor Ministry. The back house, it has a separate dwelling on it. The back house was a home for men coming out of alcohol and drug abuse. Several men lived there. And when they bought it, they bought it from a daycare center, and the back house was used at the daycare center. And they bought it from the McNeils. Mr. McNeil built the back house, was a working garage. He fixed cars for people, and he added on to the back of it, which was a beauty shop from Lucille. So when I bought it, I turned it into a rental property, and that's what it's been since 1992. I bought it August of 1991. I was told, I believe it was in 92, by a water department employee, that I had to pay double on the water meter, one water meter, for all those businesses from Mr. McNeil from the beginning. I didn't really argue with her, but I asked her, you know, why, and she said it was just ordinance, you know? I never checked it out. It was a very rough time for us because it was right after my brother was murdered by Pasadena police, and we were known as the family of a cop killer, and she basically called me that. She said there'd be no concessions made for the family of a cop killer. My mother and father were dealing with grief. My mother cried 24/7, and during all of that, I adopted a special needs child from the Boys and Girls Harbor, and he had come from a very abusive background, so I was dealing with him. So I never fought it. So for all these years, I have been paying double on that one meter. In 2016, I became an Airbnb host. I actually am the first Airbnb host in Pasadena. Houston Chronicle did two cover stories on me. I'm not a vacation place. I do not have people coming in for one or two nights. I don't do anything less than 30 days, which makes me a residential landlord, and I typically get people coming in to work at the chemical plants, NASA, a lot of traveling nurses, especially during COVID. I had a lot of business during COVID with traveling nurses, and typically, they come in for three to six months. So that's what I've been doing. Right now, it's been vacant in the back. I had a really bad experience with the last Airbnb guest, and so I, I'm not being the landlady right now. It was really hard. So anyway, I, someone said to me about a month ago, is that an ordinance for you to be charged double on your water meter? I said, I guess. They said, you need to look that up. So I did. I checked it, Texas state ordinances, you know, there's nothing. So I contacted the water department. Oh, well, we have a legal right to do that. And I said, well, okay, but what's the ordinance? Well, we'll get back with you, Ms. Harris. Never got back with me. And I finally sent a certified letter saying, I want to know, what's the ordinance that gives City of Pasadena the right to double charge me on my one water meter? And no one has gotten back with me about that. Mr. Horario's been trying to help me. So I'm thinking that there is no ordinance, and I've been double charged.
Thank you, ma'am.
And can I say one more thing?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mary Davis.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm, my name is Mary Davis, for those who haven't got to meet yet. I think I've met most of you. I'm here on behalf of my church, Christ Church Apostolic. As many have seen, our church building caught fire this past Saturday. We are grateful for the efforts of the Houston Fire Department, but unfortunately, it's unsalvageable. I'm reaching out to our surrounding community for resources and support. Although our property is technically in Houston, we are so close to Pasadena's border and even share a fence with a PISD school. Even many of our members live here in Pasadena, like myself. We are seeking a company who will be willing to demo and clean up debris in exchange for viable materials such as metal or wiring, and I'm here speaking tonight in hopes that someone here or someone they know is able to assist. Please reach out to me on Facebook, Mary C. Davis, or speak with me after the meeting. We want to publicly thank Fountain Blue here in Pasadena for accommodating us as a place for worship and invite you all to services there Sundays at 11:00 AM and Wednesdays at 7:00 PM. Come grow and build with us. I thank you for your time and your purse.
Thank you, ma'am. Bolivar Fraga? I hope I said that right, pronounced that correctly.
Fraga.
Fraga.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Bolivar Fraga, I work for Baker Ripley, and as you well know, we have the Community Center on Fairmont Parkway or Pasadena campus. There, we do a lot of programs, and one of those is a leadership development class that I personally teach as part of our civic engagement work, and we've had a group here this evening that went through the training recently. We include a civics 101, want to encourage people to get to know how government works, you know, local, state, and federal level. And so also want to take this opportunity to thank your city controller and councilmembers Estrada and Fusler. Back on August 28th, we hosted a community workshop about the city budget, you know, just want to help inform the community about that, so want to thank them for making that possible, and particularly your city controller gave a great presentation about it. And Baker Ripley, we're here to support the community any way we can, and thank you for this opportunity and wish you all a good evening and a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stephen Alvarez.
The reason for my conduct tonight is for us to be, we're supposed to be one and treated equal, but here it is. I'm still struggling to fight for my family, and the resources being used against my family are my tax dollars. My tax dollars, your tax dollars, are being used to hinder children from, from enjoying life just like everyone else's when their father works hard, and I was, I was doing it the same time trying to help an elderly. My hopes grew when we had change of administration, knowing that Wagner was a corrupt liar, and, and the hope for this new administration to come in, and, and it's not so much our council members, but, but to actually hear the mayor himself tell, tell my, tell my neighbors, hey, what Wagner's doing is giving the city of Pasadena a black eye, when many people already know there's so much racism in Pasadena, and we hope to change that. And these are the words of Thomas. Thomas said, Wagner's giving Pasadena a black eye. Those are your words. I saw him during election time. He looked at me dead in the eyes. He says, if I become mayor, all this nonsense comes to an end. Just another lying politician. Can't hold, you can't own your word. I would never do that. And the reason why I'm troubled by that is because I go to, I go to, I share the church with this man. We know when you pick up the Bible, it's not just on Sunday. You got to walk the same walk on Monday. So, so when you lie to your fellow Christians, as a grown man, if you were a child, I can comprehend, but a grown man to lie to another grown man saying, hey, if the Lord blesses me with the mayor title, we'll make this nonsense stop. But here it is, ongoing. I have family members in the service, so I don't disrespect the service. I, I am, I am shining the light on Pasadena that we are still struggling with racism today. For Thomas to sit here and make behind-the-scenes deals, this ma, this, this new chief, he's, he's part of endorsements. You can, you can look at, you can look at the endorsement page. It was about $50,000 that he endorsed. I'd give you $50,000 if I could make 100 and something. If I could make 100 and something thousand, I'd give you $50,000. That's what happened. That's exactly what happened, and you know that. I mean, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you end up like this. You know, we're from, we're from the same church, and if you're not a man of your word, you can't call yourself a man. If you leave, if you talk about Jesus Christ on Sunday but forget his name on Monday, you can't call yourself a Christian. You just can't. I know who I'm fighting for. I'm fighting for my children. I'm not fighting for myself. I'm not, I'm not fighting for anybody here but my children. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Eric Sanchez.
My name is Eric Garcia Sanchez. Date of birth, August 4th, 1992, so don't confuse me, confuse me with any other. I'm just going to jump into the matter again of the death of Danny Lynn Stevens. In short, Detective McFadden was the lead investigator, not just in his case, but also in the case of Marvin William Harris. Chief Jackson told me he would look into my concerns, but there is a clear conflict of interest because Jackson was in Pasadena for a while and very likely knows McFadden and many of the other officers involved. He even investigated Marvin William Harris a year before his death. Even as Chief Turnipseed, along with Officer Reed, arrested Danny in the first place in '76, he would have been too close to the matter to be impartial investigator if I had raised this issue when he was chief. Many of the chiefs along the years have often been too connected to the officers involved in the cases. Of course, they would not prosecute their own. Is this why Pasadena keeps these people so close within their ranks? Finally, Glenn Wells was the officer who took the photographs of Danny's death scene. Those photographs, instead of clarifying what happened, concealed obvious things. The angles cut off the view of Danny's neck, the high shirt collar hides the marks. In the end, you can't see anything useful. When Danny's family at their funeral home later noted what appeared to be defensive nail marks on Danny's necks, those marks were written away through sworn affidavits blaming the family for tampering with the body. Think about that. Sworn affidavits shifting blame onto a grieving family, which is absolutely despicable. Glenn Wells helped allow that to happen by failing to capture clear images at the very start of the investigation. I met Officer Glenn Wells in person two weeks ago. He evaded every single question I asked and then verbatim said, you've already told me enough that I know that this is not just coming straight out of the blue. Who do you work for and what are we looking for? You wouldn't be showing up here asking all this information if you didn't have somebody that you were working for, because that's been over 30 years ago. Who does this man think I work for? Why would he get upset like this? If there's nothing to hide, why not just speak up and explain? If mistakes were made, victim, if crimes were committed, investigate them. I saw the soulless look in the man's eyes, so I understand all of Danny's friends' fear as, in my opinion, yeah, these officers are capable of anything to avoid accountability for his death or any others. And we all know cormorant angles are the most dangerous, but this won't make me waver. You regularly preach that you all believe in Jesus or God, and so how won't you just prove it by just getting down to this matter already? And I still mean what I said before when Bianca wasn't present, that I don't believe she lives here, and I know her friends, and I'm trying to keep them, respect them because they're apparently afraid of her. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Presentation of minutes for September 2nd, 2025. Can I have a motion? Motion. Guerrero, second Fusler. Any questions? All in favor? Progress payments? Motion Estrada? Second Guerrero? Is there any questions? Any opposed? All in favor? Motion carries. Finance resolutions? Can I have a motion? Motion Guerrero? Second Fusler? Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. City boards and commissions, Madam Secretary.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I missed personnel.
Personnel changes, A. I apologize. Motion by Guerrero, second by Fusler. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. City boards and commissions, Madam Secretary.
South Houston Gardens, Section 1, partial replat number 6, four lots, one block.
Motion. Motion Guerrero? Second. Second Fusler? Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. So on our final readings, 182 and 183 will be deferred, and ordinances 173, 174, 175 will be read separately, Madam Secretary.
Ordinance 2025-173, ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the annual budget for the City of Pasadena, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026. A roll call vote is required for adoption.
Councilman Horario. Aye. Councilman Valerio.
No.
Councilman Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hout.
Aye.
Councilman Estrada.
Aye.
Councilman Dow.
Aye.
Councilman Fusler.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Motion carries.
I missed Councilmember Horario.
Aye.
You need to, we need to take a, a motion in a second.
Can I have a motion? Motion Estrada?
Second.
Second Horario. Thank you all.
Ordinance 2025-174, adopting the annual budget for the City of Pasadena, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026, and appropriating those amounts to those object accounts containing a repealing clause, containing a savings clause, and containing a severability clause. A roll call vote is required for adoption.
May I have a motion? Motion Estrada? Second Ms. Van Hout? Councilman Horario?
No.
Councilman Valerio?
No.
Councilman Estrada?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Councilman Guerrero?
No.
Councilman Van Hout?
Aye.
Councilman Estrada?
Aye, but I have comments.
Please.
I know that there's been discussions regarding the budget process, and I've had conversations with the mayor's team, and I'm confident that the process is going to improve. I know that the mayor's committed to transparency, and so I, I remain committed and confident that, that the process will improve. Thank you.
Councilman Dow.
I, too, reflect Councilman Estrada's concerns, and I'm confident, too, that we are going to have a more transparent budget process. So, aye.
Councilman Fusler.
Yeah, last meeting, I asked for our financial obligation on the convention center. Thank you to Lindsay from the Controller's Office and Karina from the EDC. I got that information, so that was very helpful. So thank you to those ladies for giving me that information. I also submitted my CIP request, which was another concern that I had. I hope these will be considered because these are improvements that are needed to our district and ultimately to our city. I do hope as well that we can be more involved in this process earlier on. I realize that we were just sworn in back in July, but going forward, I hope that we can start this process much earlier. I believe that this budget is an improvement to last year's budget because we have added educational pay. I know it's not a whole lot, but it's something, and I hope we can continue to show our city employees that we support them in their personal and professional development, so I am thankful that that's included. I hope that, again, we can, going forward, we can be more involved in the process because we spend a lot of time talking to our constituents, and we want to make sure that we're representing them well as we make these decisions. Thank you.
I'll comment.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify something. I noticed that, I don't want to go unnoticed, the reason I voted no for this budget is very clear. In my experience of practice of 22 years and been in engineering field, it was very alarming to see the capital improvement budget that was allocated in this budget. A city of our size, in comparison to other cities of our size, is dramatically lopsided. And, and so that's, that was a tremendous concern, as well as other concerns that we raised in the past. Also, I just had a concern with this budget in particular, in my district. Our budget was decreased tremendously, so that was a very extreme concern for my, especially with my constituents regarding the flooding and the improvements that we need. Having such a reduction and such a near dire need was an extreme concern to me. Now, again, I understand this was not the best budget, and it is better than the last, and I understand that and I appreciate that, but it can't go unnoticed that my district had a tremendous decrease in, in capital improvements. Coming from an engineering background, that's very alarming, and wanted to make sure that hopefully gets addressed in the future, and I have the confidence that it will. We've had several conversations that led me to believe that, and I'm, I'm very hopeful that that will happen in the future. So, thank you.
Councilman Fusler, what was your vote?
Aye.
Aye. My vote is aye.
Comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I, myself, as well, would like to address this, our annual budget. It is a daunting task to put this together. However, the response of, oh, it had already been started, is unacceptable. But from a corporate standpoint, PWC, Ernest and Young, these are a few of the big tax firms. Whenever it's busy season, the expectation is your workday is between 80 to 70 hours. I mean, realistically, we have a duty to uphold. We did not have a workshop for this budget. It's something many of us echoed, that sentiment of needing and wanting, that did not occur. We did not have a workshop for capital improvement projects, CIPs, which are the massive undertakings we take and decide as a city, reflecting also that the budgets for District A and C were significantly reduced. Northern, historically, northern districts that do need more attention, we would like it to be equitable, however, there's, there's specific streets, improvements, drainage that are really needed for the quality of life and safety of these. So for that reason, I don't accept that, that we were too far into the process. I accept that we must do better, and I, this reflects a, a difficulty and a failure amongst all of us, not just one person as a whole, and I hope that moving forward, we can have more input, more transparency. And again, we, going back to what I commented, there's more questions than answers at the moment, so for that reason, with no fiscal responsibility, I, can I support this? That would be, you know.
Councilman Guerrero, I appreciate your comments, and now I'd like to say something in response. I respect all of my city council people. They have the best interests of the city at heart. I have a couple of disagreements. We did have a budget workshop. We also, too, on our capital improvement projects, we sent out an email a couple of weeks ago. The deadline was, I believe, September 12th for council members to send in their CIP concerns. I extended that request out. There should have been an email today or tomorrow that went out to extend it out to the 22nd of this month. So for transparency's sake, the CIP budget is still in, in the works. It's not finalized at this time, and also, too, I'm instructing our council people in the information that we're sending out to give us their top five requests. Some of the CIP projects, and I will say this, being on council for eight years, they were on the books for 20 years, and I find that unacceptable. So we are going to do better. I appreciate your comments. But, you know, workshops are vital. I believe in workshops, and we'll have more to come. So with that, this motion carries.
Ordinance 2025-175, an ordinance by roll-call vote proposing the adoption of a property tax rate for the 2025 tax rate of $0.465586100 value for the City of Pasadena, Harris County, Texas, consisting of $0.398097100 value maintenance and operating, operation rate, and $0.067489100 value debt rate per the specified requirements provided under the Texas Property Tax Code, authorizing the levy assessment and collection of ad valorem taxes based upon the established rate, declaring the, declaring distribution of said tax rate in the general fund and the debt service fund of the city, providing for a severability clause.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Estrada.
Second.
Second by Councilman Guerrero. We'll have a roll-call vote.
Aye.
A. B. C. D. E.
Aye.
F. And G.
Aye.
I'm a as well. Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please continue.
Ordinance 2025-176, ordinance 2025-177, ordinance 2025-178, ordinance 2025-179, ordinance 2025-180, ordinance 2025-181.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Councilman Guerrero, second, Councilman Fusiler. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. First readings.
Ordinance 2025-184, authorizing and approving a contract signed between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and Craycom Incorporated for the 2025 Annual Traffic Mobility Improvement, CIP number T021, and appropriating the amount of $6,400, excuse me, $642,272.43. Ordinance 2025-185, appropriating, approving the rates of medical, dental, vision, and COBRA for active employees, and pre-65 retiree medical, dental, and vision rates. Ordinance 2025-186, authorizing and approving an extension of the renewal of service agreement between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and the United Healthcare Services Incorporated, Exhibit A, for plan year 2026. Ordinance 2025-187, authorizing the mayor of the City of Pasadena, Texas, on behalf of the neighborhood network, to accept the Shell Deer Park Community Grant Award, in the amount of $5,000. Ordinance 2025-188, authorizing and approving the acquisition of property at Zero Lilac Street for the Little Vents Arm and Bayou Separation Project, CIP number D054, and any related closing costs in a not-to-exceed amount of $59,233 from the Community Development Block Grant mitigation account. Ordinance 2025-189, authorizing approving a grant application and agreement between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and the Texas Department of Transportation, in the amount of $28,400, to conduct a commercial motor vehicle traffic enforcement program, to be administered by the Pasadena Police Department for fiscal year 2026. This is a continuation of the Police Department's Commercial Motor Vehicle Enforcement Program. Ordinance 2025-190, authorizing approving a grant application and agreement between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and the Texas Department of Transportation, in the amount of $190,120, to conduct a comprehensive vehicular traffic enforcement program to be administered by the Pasadena Police Department. This is a continuation of the Police Department's Comprehensive Vehicular Enforcement Program. Ordinance 2025-191, amending ordinance 2021-117, which authorizes and approve a contract between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and HR Green Incorporated for engineering design services for Crenshaw PRV Building Improvements Project, CIP number W077, by appropriating an additional $39,100 from account 3900741501.
Motion Dow. Second Heredia. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
Resolution 2025-167, authorizing approving the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Pasadena, Texas, the attached combined participation form with eight opium manufacturers, Alvegen, Amneal, Apotex, these names are, Hykma, Endivor, Mylan Sun, and Zitus, settling defendants. Resolution 2025-168, accepting a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Tier Memorial Herman for use by the Parks and Recreation Department in connection with the 2025 wheelchair shootout basketball tournament. Resolution 2025-169, amending resolution 2025-16, accepting additional funding to be used for the purpose of overtime reimbursement from the United States Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service, in the amount of $29,741. Resolution 2025-170, accepting in-kind donations for prizes for bingo event valued at $120 from the Lincoln Heritage for use by the Parks and Recreation Department in connection with the Madison Job Senior Center. Resolution 2025-171, accepting an in-kind donation of prizes for bingo event valued at $130 from the Lincoln Heritage for use by Parks and Recreation Department in connection with the Madison Job Senior Center. Resolution 2025-172, accepting an in-kind donation of prizes for bingo event valued at $120 from McKenna's Fox Health Insurance Brokers for use by the Parks and Recreation Department in connection with the Madison Job Senior Center. Resolution 2025-173, accepting a donation of $5,000 from Occidental Chemical Corporation, OxyChem, for use by volunteer Pasadena in connection with Food Drive 2025. Resolution 2025-174, authorizing the Pasadena Parks and Recreation Department to accept a donation from HEB in the amount of $10,000 for the music and movie and Christmas tree lighting events. Resolution 2025-175, authorizing approving city's acceptance of city access easement, sanitary control easement, two-city drainage easements, city detention easement, and city water line easements from Lindell Chemical Company related to the acquisition of certain property by the Economic Development Corporation for the city's construction and operation of water distribution system improvements.
Motion Dow. Second, Ms. Van Hout. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.